Township's thinking about LMAX should review a court case, Tuscola Wind Three versus Elmer Township, and consult a sound expert. Elmer Township ended up using LMAX and they don't have wind turbines today. That's because a forty-five decibel LMAX limit means you'd be requiring a half-mile setback from every non-participating property line. That is not fair to the farmers, that is not fair to the hundreds of landowners who have signed up their property, or signed up to participate in this project. Our property rights matter and a vote for LMAX is a vote to infringe on our property rights. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Number one, oh she was correct, Douglas Township. Number one, there are not hundreds of leases. Number two, um, yeah, LMAX is enforceable. It just means they have to be farther away and say it's at a safe distance. Period. I mean, it's, that's what it's all about for us, the same setbacks. We can't accommodate turbines here if we've got too many homes and too many areas. Number three, boats, farm equipment, um, all the other things he mentioned do not run twenty-four-seven. Turbines don't either, all go around, but they certainly do for several nights in a row, all night long, disturb sleep. That's the most important time to keep it down. So, that's all I have.
My name is Keith Christensen. I'm from Maple Valley. Seems to me that all this is one-sided. Most governments try to do it somewhere in the middle, try to satisfy everybody. That's just my comment.
I'm Kathy Burns. I have a, I'm a landowner in Maple Valley, Tulsa, and I have a grandmom that lives in Maple Valley, Tulsa, that ended up having three organ transplants. He also is autistic. And if you look into this, this is not good for these kind of kids. And I would hope that you would try to protect him. He really doesn't need any other things after him. Thank you.
My apologies Kathy.
Anybody else?
Sheriff Houser, excuse me, Maple Valley Township, you are serving us to protect us and I'd like to see you do that. This isn't a thing about property rights because if other people are controlled by ordinances, you can't just do what you want to do on your property. I can't go out and have a sewer pile in my backyard without an ordinance to have a permit for me to do that. You know the majority of the people do not want turbines and the way to prevent that is to write restrictive ordinances. You know that they kill wildlife, you know that they cause health concerns or health issues for people, as this lady behind me stated. I don't want to see anybody else suffer who's already suffering from an illness because a landowner wants to have a retirement and have a wind turbine. You know the majority of us do not want wind turbines and we know by law that we can't say no, but we can write a restrictive ordinance and I expect you to do so. Thank you.
Anybody else?
If everybody's concerned about the, oh, Paul Ikenrath, Maple Valley. If everybody's so concerned about noise, why are you restricting the height of the turbines? Bringing the noise down here is going to cause twice as many turbines have to be put in. I can't speak about autism, but my daughter does have epilepsy and the Epilepsy Foundation says there is no problem. Her doctor, the head of the neuroscience spectrum says there is no problem for having turbines. And, uh, yeah, I do need to retire, help with retirement. I lost my wife ten years ago. I've been living on just one income. My daughter can't work. I need some help. That's about it.
Anybody else?
Tim Thorne, Maple Valley Township. We've, uh, we've been dealing with this for quite some time now. We all got involved because an improper ordinance was passed. And the people stood up and said, hey, wait a minute, you know, this is a little too close. And we all went to work studying. I mean, I think everybody really took it to task. I know I did. The thing that strikes me the most about people that came to these meetings and spoke are the people that are the most underrated, the ones that actually live in the footprint of a wind turbine farm and they live with it daily. We can all assume what that's like, but those are the people that I listened to the most when they came because they drove here sometimes hours, you know, and they had nothing to gain from it. The one thing that they were trying to do for a community like ours that they lived in was say, hey, people, you know, be careful with what you're flirting with here. Um, there's good things and bad things and we know what the bad things are like. Improperly cited wind turbines near homes drive people nuts. They come here to tell us that. I mean, why would they do that? What would motivate a human being to do that? I certainly wouldn't do it unless I was completely distraught and needed to tell fellow Americans of mine like, hey, man, this is no good. Well, what's also interesting is our government has put us to this task. They're running a green initiative in our country and they're expecting us to write our own laws. They can do this once that happens, folks. Once we write our own laws that they asked us to write, that's it. You know, we put it under referendum for a reason and it was, you guys decided to drop it and work on it and I really appreciated that. And I've seen you do this over the course of the years and some change. But we're, what, you know, and I'm not discrediting the things that you've done. Right now you're setting on a pretty good ordinance. You're setting on an ordinance that allows development, but it puts it where it should be, away from people. It starts it somewhere where you can actually, uh, witness it yourself and then decide if you want to change it and move it closer to you. That's where I stand with this. You guys have done a great job writing a pretty good ordinance. You never start a project like this, trust me, I do projects. I do work like this. You never start all in. You always start and you learn because if you start in a bad way, you're done. It's a fifty-five-year life sentence. There ain't a person in this room that will be alive when this is over. When you sign a lease, I read the lease contract from Apex. Wow, man, wow. You ever heard the term indemnification? Look it up because the contract's full of it. It's in section five and it makes them blameless. It makes them blameless for what happens.
Jessica Quayle, Cato Township, um, property value guarantee. It guarantees us as homeowners that if our property value goes down, if this project goes through, then somebody is held accountable to make up that difference. Because if you look around this room, most of the people here, our biggest investment is going to be our house. Eighty-eight percent. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves if you're not listening to the community. That's it.
Cristo, Cato Township. Uh, my family used to have a farm, a centennial farm here in Cato or Maple Valley and we have one in Cato Township. And, uh, my family come here a long time ago in the eighteen hundreds and they didn't come here to listen to industrial wind turbines. You can't put them next to houses, it just can't be done. You need three hundred and fifty-foot tip limits. You need a mile and a half setbacks from any lake, river, body of water. Because once your bodies of water are gone, you're done.
Ashlyn Newell from Maple Valley Township. At our last board meeting, Robert Scott from Grand Rapids did presentation with a bunch of ping pong balls, reducing far families to the amount of poverty tax we pay compared to folks who might have expensive lake homes. Now, the whether we had wind energy was based on taxable value of property, Mr. Scott might be in trouble because just one wind turbine would probably be the largest taxpayer in this whole township. You need a lot more red ping pong balls. Another problem I had with Mr. Scott's analogy was that he assumed if you hadn't signed a lease, you don't support wind energy. That could be further from the truth. I've talked to so many people in Trupan and Coral and yes, around the lakes, who either support wind energy and the benefits it'll bring to our community, or frankly don't care what a farmer does on their own property. You might not realize how many people are signed up for this project, so I asked Apex folks and they said I could share some numbers. Do you know that there are over eight hundred properties signed up with the Macon Wind Project across the county, including a hundred and fifty right here in Maple Valley Township? Those properties represent over eight thousand acres here in Maple Valley alone. Now, a lot of the landowners who have signed up so far are farmers and seniors who don't always make it out to these meetings and frankly, the behavior we've seen at them over the past eighteen months doesn't make them very appealing to attend. I know Mr. Lilian Delaney said he thinks the majority is determined by who is showing up to the meetings, but according to the Michigan Township Association, creating an ordinance is not a popularity contest, but rather it is the responsibility of the PC and the board to take public comments into consideration, but to not make their decisions based solely on them. It is the PC and the board's job to look at the evidence, research the facts, and do what is best in the interest of the township as a whole. Over the last eighteen months, we've had a lot of people come and speak at our meetings that are not from Maple Valley after this wind issue is dealt with. I doubt we will see most of them again. Please take into consideration the views of the residents and taxpayers from Maple Valley who support this project and will still be living here long after it's built. We didn't move out here just for the country view. We are part of families who've tended this ground for generations, reuse families here, and we're trying to build a brighter future for everyone by bringing some much-needed investment to the place we call home. This ordinance has come a long way since this process started and now we're asking for the PC to listen to our concerns and fix the four major problems with this ordinance. Lake setbacks, property line setbacks, shadow limits, and excessive sound regulation. These concerns are outlined in this letter from attorneys representing landowners from throughout the township. We'd like these concerns addressed before this ordinance is passed on support. If these issues aren't addressed and a reasonable compromise ordinance agreed to, participating landowners will oppose this ordinance as drafted. Thank you.
Anybody else?
It's Vicki. I'm going to have to jump around here because I have tons of notes. Land value guarantee, yeah. Benefit? Who says they're going to benefit? I know Isabel and Brad, they're still waiting for their money. The roads, Isabel's roads still aren't fixed yet. How long has that been? In regards to the noise, Newell? I believe in the ordinance how written waivers are offered. It is not restrictive. You take that to court and a judge will tell you flat out, you're offering waivers to people. It is not restrictive whatsoever. The twenty-six-hundred feet half-mile for a lake setback? Thank you for raising it to a mile, but I'd like more. It seems to me like when a safety manual got snuck out on the four-hundred-foot turbine setback where one thousand six hundred and forty was the danger zone and people had to get away from that, so it needs to be further than our setback. I'm hoping that the board read Dan Main's, or the article about Pint Township and Mr. Main talking about not trusting Apex. He has every reason to say that. I have talked to farmers that have leases. Apex has told me in front of witnesses at Douglas Township meeting that if they want to get out of their lease, they can. This person seems to say that a lot because he can and he wants to. So, as far as trust, I don't trust them. They've been lying all along. As far as restrictive, it's not. There's waivers. So, the noise, I don't want to hear it. I would like the LMAX to stay.
Tyler Prue out of Maple Valley Township. I think it does say a lot when someone's able to take time out of their, out of their day. To show up in, to show up in person and express their views. I do take my hat off to the Newells and they've almost single-handedly taken out the side of supporting the turbines and I, and I, I. Anyway, I think we should take a vote right now. I think it says a lot when someone can come out of their house, show up in the community meeting.
Just a moment Tyler. I just want to address everybody. He can speak again. We had two public comment portions. Everyone is allowed to speak during each one.
I think we should vote.
He can have my five minutes.
I don't even want the five minutes, but you should be able to listen to the people that come out, take their time, like you, and just express their opinions. Otherwise, I mean, you, you should be able, if it's this big of a deal, you should be able to come out and at least express your opinion. This is the most people I've ever seen at one of these meetings. Can we vote right now?
Yeah.
I'll pick up on that. Um, those who are in favor of this project, would you be willing to stand up? In favor, anybody willing to stand up? How many people are against this project and want a restrictive ordinance and want big wind to leave, want Kyle to go home? Thank you.
I think if we gotta be more up first, I think it's, uh.
Those are common. Does that mean? I don't have a microphone. Am I still on my public comment?
Let's move on to the next person.
Mary Percol, Maple Valley Township. I just want to let you know that the reason people go to other township meetings is because, like my house where I live, I live in Maple Valley Township, but what happens in Windfield Township affects me. So, that's why people go to other township meetings.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like you to have, have you ask the Apex rep here if he can explain why these are good for us. Other than them leaving. I thought I could speak twice. Okay. Can the Apex rep give his point and caliphying they're so good?
Anybody else? Got Cam?
Cam, she's. Cam?
I'm just going to kind of bounce off some things other people said. First, the, the article. Oh, sorry, it's Amy Lewis and I'm from Macon Township. And I guess I'll start by saying, yeah, we come to other meetings. Um, we also have seen people that support wind turbines at other meetings. Um, Douglas Township had one recently that was hacked, couple of them. And, um, there were people from my township there, in Douglas Township and people from here, I mean, there were people from everywhere, so that's kind of spread out. And it's because we are Macon County citizens, which brings me to the comment that Mr. Paul from me about the county commission and, um, and their review on Belvedere and they can use a lot of them. Those people know nothing, very little. Our, our township officials know more because of us coming and both sides presenting things, but county commissioners know very little. It's really, and it, you know, it's just a tech, a, a technicality we can do that. Their recommendation's called very little, um, very little water, uh, because they really are not well educated about it. And there are some, one ridiculous from our township, it's very, very, uh, pro wind and he makes that very clear whenever he does one of these. So then I'm going to talk about the eagles. A lot of us have read that article because it is current and it's been on M Line, it's been on UTV, it's been in the Associated Press, a hundred and fifty eagles. And Next Era is, um, is the wind company in Gratchett County. And I personally have a friend whose son, um, has a friend in Gratchett County who works for Next Era picking up dead birds and bats. And I brought that up at, I think, every township meeting that I went to. And in most cases, somebody on the commission or somebody from the audience said, well, cats kill more birds than, um, than wind turbines do. Well, and somebody from Apex usually says that it's not true, that it doesn't happen. Well, you know now because they, they actually, they paid eight million dollars and there's a lot more to it than just that. But this is really current. This is just the last few days. So, you can't say it's, you know, back from the two thousands place in Spain or, um, anything like that. The sound levels that, that, um, that Newell's brought up. If you want people to be sleep deprived, um, lose their jobs like Mr. Schindelbecker, not lose it, but be demoted until you actually got to a place where you could sleep. Sleep, even if none of the other health issues happen, sleep deprivation is stressful and stress does cause illness. So, you guys really need to take your people into consideration, take the population of our Macon County townships into consideration.
Thank you.
And make a humane ordinance.
Anybody else?
Yeah, um, I think that, oh, Robin Paulson, Maple Valley. Take from Ashlyn Newell up on her suggestion that you make a restrictive ordinance and then let them do the referendum. I can tell you right now that there's not three hundred and fifty people in Maple Valley that will vote for the wind and that's how many signatures you have to have. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
So, I move to re- close the public camera? Can I move to second here? All, all the camera, all favor? All close?
Just, just a point of order. I'd, I'd consider that closing the public hearing. So, I don't think you need to do anything else, but just, just so everybody knows the public hearing is not closed.
We'll open up for deliberation on the actual ordinance. Anything anybody wants to bring up? On our ordinance.
Now we have to watch videos.
On deliberation, I won't line up.
Oh, I was playing games.
She wasn't. Candy crush on her phone. She's playing candy crush.
All right, you have something you wanted to bring up, I take it?
Hello? Over a year ago, I became aware of the wind project being proposed in our township. I was interested in this and have been for many years, so I attended a meeting about it via Zoom. I then began doing what I had thought about doing some smart guy. I started attending the two monthly Maple Valley Township meetings to learn more. I was planned to the planning commission and without any experience, I've tried my best to serve my township to the best of my ability. I eagerly attended the MTA class to learn more about the job. I purchased books from them to learn more and have been actively listening and going over notes from the meetings that I attend for the township. I have attended informative meetings via Zoom or in-person for both sides of the wind ordinance issue. I'm trying to understand both sides of this issue and do my best to present things to consider for this current ordinance that we are working on. We here on the planning commission have heard so many things from the public and some have been presented as disrespectful and some border unthreatening ways to us. Some of the comments make me wonder where the thinking comes from when it's presented to us. I'm trying hard to keep an open mind that we all have a right to comment on any issue at hand and that we as a planning commission will try to sort it out to make good decisions for everyone. Decisions that I know won't lose everyone, but we are tasked with not writing an ordinance that is so restrictive that no one can come to our township to do a project. One comment made from the public was to just copy the city and find township ordinance and be done with it. Yet, as I read through the books I purchased on zoning ordinance and from what I have learned from the classes, I was sunk too with your tax dollars or advised not to do such things. We are not making an ordinance for Apex. We're making an ordinance for industrial wind turbine projects if one should want to have their business in our township. Rules that they must adhere to if they want to build one, rules that will be for those who want the turbines and those who don't and somehow are trying to meet somewhere close to the middle in designing them. It's not an easy task and I sure don't want to get this wrong and be sorry in the future, but I sure don't want restrictions so tight that it blocks any business ventures from being sought in this township. Other comments have been to just send in the ordinance now as is because of a vote referendum anyways and save money to be spent on the sound experts. And then the next time, the comments are to keep working on it. And both of these comments are coming from the same person, people. So, as a board, we finally say, okay, let's send it in and cancel the sound people. And now these same people are criticizing us for doing just as they have asked. What are we to do? We can't make a restrictive ordinance. There has to be some give and take and I do believe that is one of the definitions of compromise. And compromise has to come from both sides of an issue and that is what we as the PC are trying to do. We're accused of not listening and if we do, we're still criticized by the same folks. I'm ready, willing, and able to continue working on this ordinance and if we get it right or as close to possible to be ready and it's sent back to work on to more, then at least we'll have a solid base from which to work on in place. We will not have to start over at square one. Another comment made recently was why are the lake people more important than the rest of us? When I first heard that comment made, I thought, good grief, we just can't make anyone happy. But then I thought about it some more. Why are the lake people more important than the rest of us? What about the farmers, town residents, people living out in the township? But when I recall the many comments from the public at the meetings, an awful lot do seem to come from the folks who live or vacation on the lakes and what they are demanding. So, by the same token, that we are not writing an ordinance for the wind people who want to build here, we are not going to be writing an ordinance just for the lake people. Sometimes I wonder if the folks think that the turbines will be placed in the parks in Trupan and Coral or in the middle of the two towns. The wind companies do not decide that this is where a turbine would be nice and then just throw it up and see what happens. They spend several years studying wildlife, land, different laws required from many different sources and how and where and if they should build a turbine. As I understand it, Apex is still in the study data collection phase of the project to see if things line up to make it okay to build in our township. And I'm assuming that those who are eligible have, to have a turbine on their property are also doing their due diligence on research to make sure the wind companies are being forthright about the proposed use of their property. I was given a paper on, about, with many items to consider before signing the contract with the wind company. I'm hoping those landowners also have seen this list of items and are doing their homework. I'm hoping that the landowners who want to sign are also making sure that everything about the project goes as safely as possible for everyone, not just us. Yes, many think it is all about the money and that can be a powerful motivator, but both the wind company and the landowners need to put aside the money part of it and consider everything before signing a contract. I've been told that I too could benefit financially from the project, project going on ahead here. And I've told those people that I don't want to discuss the money on the, money on it like this. The last thing I'm worried about and that I need to concentrate first on the ordinance for a talk. I have many comments that I've taken notes on over the last year and so much to consider.